Daniel Ramey Lane to give our invocation tonight. Horace, the floor is yours.
Right. We thank you so much, Mayor Howard. Thank this city council for inviting me to open up with prayer tonight. Let us go to God in prayer. Father God, we come to you in your son Jesus' name. We thank you for your grace. We thank you for your mercy. We thank you for what your son did on the cross for us, Father God. We thank you for just being so just and so righteous, even when we're not, Father God. And we just pray over this meeting tonight, Father God. We pray, Lord, that you will just bless this meeting right now, Father God. We pray, Lord, that you will, your spirit will reign in here on tonight, Father God. We pray, Lord, that your agenda will be met on tonight, Father God. And we pray, Lord, that this city council will just seek you first, not only for the city of Monroe, but even in their personal lives right now, Father God. And we just say thank you, Father God, for each and every member on this council right now, Father God, that's going to bat for the city of Monroe. Father God, we pray, Lord, that we will put aside our own agendas, that we will come together as a city. And there's so many other cities that's watching Monroe. And we thank you, Father God, for the progress you've allowed us to make here in this city right now, Father God. And we just continue to give you all the praise, all the glory and the honor. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Again, I mentioned that he's at Tabernacle. That's about the nicest group of folks I think I've ever met. So if you're free on Sunday mornings, go over and see Horace and Tony and everybody else. Mr. Bailey, do I have a list? Okay. All right. Then we will call this meeting to order. This is the public hearing section for the millage rate increase. And to kick that off, let me give you a little explanation. This is for the 2025 millage rate. We recommend approval of this rate at 6.934 mils as presented on Form PT-38. Due to the increasing costs associated with maintaining city services, staff recommends a millage rate of 6.934. This is an increase of .4 mils of the calculated full rollback, and only 0.273 mils increase over the 2024 rate. This will give the city of Monroe a prospective 7.68 increase in revenues, which translates to approximately $421,682 more than 2024, assuming a 100% of collections. This is only a $60,000 increase in the current budgeted revenues. Net maintenance and operations millage rate is 6.934 mils, and the bond millage rate is zero, giving a total millage rate of 6.934. The five-year history of the digests with the current years, digest and levy were properly advertised in the city's legal organ, the Walton Tribune, on July 27, 2025, and again on August 3, 2025, as well as the city of Monroe's website. Property taxes will be billed and collected by the Walton County Tax Commissioner's Office. That being said, Logan, did you want to give any explanation in addition?
Like the mayor said, this is just to keep our services in continuation. No major changes expected in the budget for 2026. We're just trying to fight the inflation that everybody else is and just maintain those quality services. Our tax digest did not grow very much at all, as we kind of expected. There's been a lot of robust growth in the city, but it didn't show up in the tax digest. It moved maybe a little over 1%. So that's why we're having to do this just slight bump in the millage rate.
Thank you, Mr. Probst. Are there any questions from council to Logan or Beth? At hearing none, I'll declare this portion of the meeting open for the purpose of public input. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the millage rate increase? That never has anybody stand up. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak against the millage rate increase tonight? Well, I think, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And could you introduce yourself and talk into the microphone, please?
My name is Jean Yendel. I live in the legends of the Valkyrie.
Yes, ma'am.
And I appreciate and I understand that we all are dealing with the inflation issues. You see it every day at the grocery store. And my question, maybe to you, Logan, would be, or even to the mayor, what are we looking to do with this increase? It's nice to have the money, you know, and put it there, but what are we looking to appropriate? What services are we going to enhance with this 60,000 or, you know, amount of money that we are asking that?
Thank you. Thank you for your question. I'm going to let Logan jump on that in just a second, but I will tell you that public safety is 60% of our general fund budget. This money collected is going to go basically all to employee salaries. We have to, we keep a pretty tight ship and operation is best served by the people who work here. Did you have anything else to add?
That's the gist of it. 60% of that budget is, the general fund budget is comprised of public safety. Only 30% of our general fund revenues are comprised of property taxes. So we have a pretty diverse revenue stream. So we're very fortunate with that. And just for comparison's sake, on a $300,000 home, we're looking at about $32.76 for the entire year on a tax increase for the city.
Is there anyone else here who would like to speak against the tax increase? Yes, sir, please. And your name?
Keith Yendel. I live with that lady over there. The question I have is, I understand the millage rates and everything, but also there's another factor in there, and that's the assessed value of the properties.
Yes, sir.
And there was a lot of conversation about assessed values not changing for a certain segment of the homes out there or businesses or whatever. And then we just roll the millage rate. And I don't want us to get into a millage rate race without making sure that each and every property is assessed every year or moved every year.
I appreciate your comments, and you're spot on. We, Logan and I met with the chairman and the county manager and went over a presentation of various properties within the county. Some seem to be vastly under allocated. So we're going to have, we asked for a revaluation. Of course, that will be up to the county with their agreement with the tax assessor, but we will, we'll stay on it. And we completely agree. We think it's off significantly, which should result in really a long-term reduction in millage rate for those citizens who pay taxes. And I will tell you, my opinion, there's nothing nefarious about this. I think it's just a maybe improper use of the formula, and it may just not be quite the competence that we require, but we do think, we agree with you. So we'll stay on them.
Mayor, just to clarify for the community is that the city council does not set your tax assessments. Your city properties are set by the Walton County Tax Assessor and the Board of Assessors.
Yes, sir. Right, right. And we are. I mean, that's why the first meeting started, and then the paper helped us get that word out for our citizens. Now, is there anyone else here who would like to speak against the tax increase? Hearing none, I'll declare that portion of the meeting closed. And we need to go to a vote, correct, Logan?
Yes, sir.
And I need a motion in favor of the millage rate increase, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'm prepared to make the motion to do that. But before I do, I just want to make a comment. For the folks in the room, for the folks watching on TV, as has been said, we believe, and I strongly believe, that the digest needs to be adjusted. What we've got countywide is a situation where you've got major, huge corporations that are not paying their fair share. And as a result, what happens is the burden is being placed on the backs of homeowners and small business owners. And I'm one of those people. And they, the county absolutely needs to adjust that digest and bring what we call tax equity. We're in a situation where we really don't have any choice. Our little bump is miniscule, and I hope people understand that compared to what the county has done. But we have an obligation to our people to provide the services, and it's the only way we can continue to do that. So, Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we adopt the millage rate as stated.
Thank you, Mr. Dickinson.
I echo Mr. Dickinson on that. I mean, it's kind of out of our hands, but we need to continue to do this.
And we will stay on them. Thank you. I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. I need a motion to adjourn the public hearing, please.
A move.
A motion by Ms. Sams and a second by Mr. Thompson. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Now, thank you, everybody. Sorry, thank you. That goes to you. Okay. Now, welcome to the city council meeting. This is August 12, 2025. It is 10 after 6. Let the record reflect that all members of council are present. Prior to the approval of the agenda, I do need to amend a couple of items, please. We need to remove, if no one has any heartburn about this, remove department reports this month. I'm sure you've all read them. It's going to be a bit of a long meeting, so I want to get through with that and then remove under new business, Section D, the, about, is it Major Zero? Major Captain?
K-9 Zero.
Okay, K-9 Zero. And we'll remove that from this month, that's Section E, I'm sorry. So if I could get an approval of the agenda with the amended items, please.
A move.
A motion by Ms. Malcolm in a second. Second by Ms. Crawford. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the approval of the consent agenda for May, it is the planning commission meeting minutes in historic preservation. June 12, downtown development and convention and visitors bureau minutes. And July 8, 2025 council minutes. I need a motion for the approval of the consent agenda, please.
A move, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Malcolm. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to proclamation, I'll be delivering this proclamation to Great Oaks tomorrow. This is honoring Dorothy Eileen Grove Peterson on the occasion of her 100th birthday, whereas it is a privilege to recognize and honor the remarkable milestone of longevity in the extraordinary life of Dorothy Peterson, who is celebrating her 100th birthday on August 29, 2025, and whereas Ms. Peterson was born in Kenross, Iowa, in the year 1925, and has witnessed a century of history, innovation and progress, and has contributed to the fabric of her family, community and nation with strength, wisdom and grace. And whereas throughout her life, she's been a source of inspiration to many, living a life marked by hard work, travel, hobbies, kindness, faith, service, and making a lasting impact on those who've had the joy of knowing her. And whereas Ms. Peterson was married to the late Russell Peterson and the late Bob Firth, and has been blessed with four children, 11 grandchildren and 14 great-grandchildren, leaving a legacy of love, perseverance and family. Whereas we join with family and friends and the entire community in expressing our admiration, gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Dorothy on this joyful celebration. Now therefore, I, John S. Howard, Mayor of the city of Monroe, do hereby proclaim August 29, 2025, as Dorothy Peterson 100th birthday celebration and urge all citizens to join in celebration, celebrating the life and legacy of this extraordinary centenarian. And witness whereof, I've herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Monroe to be affixed this 12th day of August, 2025. Mayor John S. Howard. So happy birthday to Dorothy. I'm envious of somebody who can live a life not only so long, but filled with so much love and contribution to our society. Moving to public comments, and I don't have anybody signed up. And I appreciate all of your being here tonight. So I will move directly to the city administrator update. Mr. Probst?
Just briefly, again, we embarked on a survey of what we considered some tax inequities. We just kind of noticed when we got our digest, tax digest, that's the summary of all property values, that it just didn't move very much. And so when we started looking into it, again, it was some of the commercial industrial and also some of the multifamily that had really not been touched in terms of values for many, many years. And even if they had been touched, they're not moving at the same trajectory or even close to what the single-family residential properties are moving. So we just want to make sure that we've got fairness for all of our citizens and so that we can provide the services that they demand and deserve. So that's what we have embarked on. And again, to echo the mayor, it's not, we're not trying to be political. We're not trying to say there's anything nefarious going on. We just want to make sure the process is proper. So if you have any questions about that, feel free to reach out to me, and I'll be happy to talk with you about that further.
Thank you, Logan. Any other questions for Mr. Probst? Mr. Bailey, assistant city administrator update, please.
Thank you, and I'll try to be as quick as I can. Did want to let the council know that our new fixed-based operator at the airport, or FBO, is actually in place, has began moving in operations. It's fellowship aviation. So if you happen to be out and about, swing by, say, hey, they've got somebody there pretty much all the time now. And then if you remember our extra special people, our ESP Fall Festival Skydive Event, which I thought was appropriate because Bill Scott is in the audience tonight, will actually be September 21 of this year. It's a great fundraiser. If anybody would like to jump out of an airplane, go for it. I would say he's the guy to do it. And then I wanted to share with you our town green, our splash pad. Since it opened Memorial Day weekend, currently right now, and I removed concert numbers from it, we've had 30,200 people actually show up to our town green and the splash pad this year. And it's open daily from, what, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. So that's pretty good visitation to the green, just for that, during the hot summer days, which it'll now slow down with schools starting back and will shut it down around Labor Day, depending on weather. Couple other quick things. Our North Lumpkin Street alleyway, the construction has started. Electric is working on moving things. Telecom will be shortly there behind them, and then the rest of the utilities. And then we'll have our pre-construction meeting for the tap grant project early September. And then Farmer's Market is in its small, short off-season right now, which gives those vendors and Audrey Fuller a little bit of a break for a month, but we've had great attendance this year. Farm to Table is October 26, so keep an eye on Facebook, on our downtown page, because tickets will go on sale. And then I know I saw some of you guys July 29 at the museum, where we opened our eighth exhibit that we have there, which is the agricultural and industrial exhibit. We had several speakers. We had a pretty good crowd actually show up, so appreciative of that. And I'll be glad to answer any questions if you've got them.
Any questions for Mr. Bailey?
Could we get a quick update on Marable Street?
Yes, sir. Mr. Middlebrooks?
They, so the cap on the trench is all the way down to Sorrel Street. Unfortunately, we caught the imporing concrete without the test results, so we're having to make some cores to see if they'll pass. That's going to be a seven to 10-day process. So we're probably looking at paving week after next, so.
Thank you.
Unfortunately.
Thank you, Rodney. Are there any other questions, comments? Okay, moving to department request. This is a request to purchase four solid tires. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we're asking your approval to purchase four solid tires for the John Deere tractor at the transfer station in the amount of $29,039.79. And the price includes service fees for pressing on the tires and freight. And I take any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Are there any questions for Danny? I'll entertain a motion, please.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the REBC grant award approval request. Mr. Smith?
I've got this one.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
This is a request we had brought to you, I believe, towards the end of last year, early part of this year, that we had been awarded the REBC grant for $50,000. It's a roadside enhancement and beautification council project. This will be at the off-ramp on 78 East for Highway 11. It'll be that little section. The lowest bid came in with Great Estates Landscaping at $58,737.67, of which we will be responsible for $8,737.67, the amount over the $50,000 grant, and asking for that approval.
Thank you, Chris. Are there any questions, Mr. Bailey? I'll entertain a motion, please.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Sams. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes.
Thank you.
While we're on that exit entry ramp at 11 and Broad, I think those lights are all out again. If you could look into that, Rodney, that'd be good. Thank you. Yes, sir. Moving to, moving to new business, a public hearing, ordinance to add Chapter 56, impact fees, first reading and public hearing. Mr. Callender?
Thank you, Mayor. So yeah, this is an ordinance to add Chapter 56 to your court of ordinances for the adoption of impact fees. Just briefly, I'm not going to read all of these, but the ordinance itself contains 18 sections. I'm not going to read all of those for you. Hopefully, you've had a chance to read over that ordinance in its entirety and all of the fine details that are within it. But I'm going to cover some of the highlights that I think you're going to be most interested in. So just hit some of the top sections that really deal with the implementation of this ordinance. The rest of it's pretty administrative and perfunctory sort of functions of the ordinance itself. But this is the imposition of development fees. This is Section 56.6. This deals with basically the date of the adoption of this ordinance is when the fees will go into effect. And then there are some exemptions in this particular section that deal with properties that have destruction, like anyone that has an apartment complex, let's say, and they say their building gets destroyed, they can replace those. There's not going to be a fee charged. Accessory uses, additions to homes, replacing manufactured homes and our existing mobile home parks, things of that nature, remodeling and repairing structures that don't include increases, those are not going to be subject to fees. Existing non-conforming projects that have existing permits will not be paying fees. And then that section also includes our methodology for calculating these types of fees, which was done for our two years while we were doing this. All right, so Section 56.7 really deals with the timing of our assessment, which is really the crux of the whole matter. Timing of assessment and payment, the time of a building permit, when someone comes in to get a building permit, we'll charge them as an impact fee. And ones that don't involve a building permit fee that are going through the code office to do land disturbance, the fee will be charged at that time. This section also includes an individual assessment determination that can be made by the city administrator under certain situations. If there's more than one land use involved, things of that nature, we can make determinations at that time. The sections get pretty elaborate as to how we make those determinations. Moving on, you're allowed to make exemptions. If there is an extraordinary project that's presented to the city, this council will be able to make determinations. As if it's an extraordinary impact, you guys will be able to make a decision if this is something you don't want to charge a fee on. The ordinance itself includes credits of someone that's paid that we need to shift a credit to. We can obviously do that. The ordinance will grant that. We can grant refunds. And then if someone is, feels like they have not handled their impact fee correctly or the city has not, they're allowed to grant appeals, and this body will be here to appeal. It's a pretty basic ordinance itself and its structure. And so the end of the ordinance itself includes the fee schedule, which is the most important part. The things you've seen in the back of the CIE and the impact fee study that you adopted last month at your meeting will include the amounts that were in the back, that include the total amounts we could charge. And this month, you're seeing the proposed amounts that Logan and I have analyzed through several months of looking at what we could charge that the state approved versus what we're proposing to you tonight. So the yellow column, I'm not going to try to read these numbers. They're a little small on the screen, but that's what we're proposing to be charged. And I'll go over some notable ones here in a second to give you some idea. Whoops. There is something happening to... there's something happening to, somebody's touching things in the back. Y'all quit doing that. Hello, y'all quit touching my mouse back there. All right. So here, this is the second screen, and then we've got, here are the notable ones here. So the ones you probably would be most interested in, this is one of the lot items, will be single-family detached housing. The total estate would allow us to charge is $11,176 per home. We are only suggesting that the city charge 22%, that would be $2,387 per house. That's comparable to other jurisdictions around this area. We're actually a little lower than most jurisdictions in comparison. An apartment unit, the total that the state says we could charge is $9,406. We're suggesting 40%, also lower than our neighboring communities that charge impact fees. Condos and townhomes, same fee, also 35%, though that's coming in at $3,197 per unit. Another notable land use is fast food restaurant. The state says we can charge $38,588 per 1,000 square feet. So a 2,000-square-foot fast food restaurant, which is a typical-sized restaurant, that would bring in a hefty fee if we were to charge a 100% impact fee. We're only suggesting that it be charged 20%, would still yield approximately $15,000 if it was a 2,000-square-foot restaurant. And then a convenience store with fuel pumps typically is what you see with those. The total we could charge is $6,371 per 1,000 square feet. We're suggesting that we keep that at 100% simply because of its typical impact from traffic and things of that nature, and response to law enforcement calls and things of that nature. That would be one of our greater impacts. Those are the notable impact fees, and that pretty much captures all of them. I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have at this time.
Any questions, Mr. Calendar? Hearing none, we'll have a second reading next month, and then we'll vote then.
Yep.
Good?
You have a public hearing in a moment.
We got a public hearing now on it, Mayor. We need to open it up to anybody that'd like to speak.
Yeah, so just to clarify. All right.
That's okay. You got a public hearing now on this ordinance. There technically is not a first reading, so this is an ordinance that requires two public hearings at back-to-back meetings. So you'll have one this month, and you'll have one next month, and y'all then can consider the adoption of the ordinance, because we changed our rules, we don't have to have first and second readings. So this will be the public hearing on the impact fee ordinance adoption. You want to hear from anybody in favor or against?
It works. Thank you. I'll declare this portion of the meeting open for the purpose of public input. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of the impact fees or the impact fee schedule? Hearing none. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak against the impact fees or the impact fee schedule? Thank you for your participation. I'll declare this portion of the meeting closed, and we will move to discuss again a second hearing next month.
Yeah, there'll be a second hearing next month, and y'all consider it for adoption next month.
Thank you. And we have an application for micro-distilleries, Grizzle Beer, Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, sir, Mayor. That application is in order.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Dickinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Is anyone here, and I'm sorry to not ask, is there anyone here from Grizzle Beer? Thank you for coming. Do you want to hang out, or are you ready to go? All right, glad you're here. This is an application for restaurant beer and wine on-premise consumption and restaurant distilled spirits. Porfirio's, Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, Mayor, that application is also in order.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or any questions for Paul? I'll entertain a motion, please. Thank you, Ms. Sams. Is there a second? Give that one to Ms. Brown. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. This is the withdrawal of electric MCT funds. Ms. Thompson?
Thank you. So this is something we discussed earlier. This is the municipal competitive trust fund that we have set aside as an investment through MEAG. We currently have $23,945,403 in that investment fund as of the end of June. This is requesting that we draw down $907,000. This is to cover some of the project costs associated with electric infrastructure and assets up through June of this year. The City of Monroe does invest $100,000 of our CIP funds into that each month, so we anticipate that the interest will take care of this drawdown, and then we'll reevaluate this, these electric projects from July to the end of the year, and then see where we are at that point. So this is just requesting that we draw down $907,000 out of the MCT fund.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Are there any questions?
Just a comment, and I think it's important to note that over $700,000 of that is to replace poles that sorely need replacing.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I can go down the list. This is for the electric relocation for the Highway 11 Tap Project pole replacement, as Mr. Dickinson just referred to. This was running the electric to the new jail infrastructure, the electric system automation, and the AMI interactive metering. This is where we can read meters remotely.
Thank you, Beth. Are there any additional questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to note, this is the first time we've ever drawn down MCT funds.
And Greg, I know you were invital in making sure those didn't get touched.
Well, just for folks' information, MCT Trust was created when the state of Georgia was thinking about deregulating the electric for going on market, so prices could have gone crazy. MEAG started to set aside money for each individual city, and we haven't used ours, but it's to be used for electrical, and that's why there's so much money in there. At some point in time, when our debt service rolls off paying for Plant Vogel III and IV, we may have to dip into those funds to help subsidize the electric rates for the citizens of Monroe, but that's basically what that's for, and I think we've been very good stewards of it. Some cities have dipped in and spent all their money on general fund and things like that, so I applaud the staff and council for not dipping into that money, because it will be used later down the line to help offset some higher utility rates when the City of Monroe in 20 years takes on the full load of their part in Vogel III and IV.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. You want to make that motion?
And I will make that motion.
And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dickinson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the renaming of a portion of Green Street to A.J. White Street. Mr. Probes?
Thank you, Mayor. We received a petition from the family of A.J. White in order to rename a portion. I believe there's, come on up, there's six parcels that are on this section of Green Street between Mayfield Drive and G.W. Carver Drive, and I'll turn it over to you, sir. Introduce yourself and tell us where you stay.
Well, my name is Johnny Brent, and I'm married to one of Reverend and Mother White's daughter's Mary. She's sitting in the back.
Hey, Mary.
And her older sister, Miss Lacy Boss, and her husband, Mr. Raymond Boss. We brought this petition because my wife, she talks frequently about the works her father and mother did in the church around, all over Monroe, Walton County, and throughout the state, and in some other states. And the home that they grew up in, I think if you saw my notes, he built the house in 1964 on Green Street. He raised five children there. He did a lot of work in the community, including starting ministers, associations, and ministering to sick, and they did a lot of things for young people. And she wanted a way to honor her parents and find a way to try to, you know, solidify their legacy for the great works that they did. And she spoke to me about it and wanted to bring a petition, so sure you all have been seeing me here. And thank you for putting us on the agenda, and thank you for listening to me every night that I was here and considering this request.
Well, it's a pleasure, and I appreciate you bringing it to our attention, because we've had far too many people who have contributed vastly to the success of Monroe that, over the years, might have been lost. So appreciate you bringing that name to us, and we are more than excited to do this. If it's okay with you, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to do that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dickinson, and thank you, Ms. Crawford. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. We'll get that name changed, we'll get the sign done, and should have that out there in the next few weeks.
I'd like to walk around and thank each person.
Absolutely.
People on your staff, I don't know Mrs. Stubbs, but I'd like to, where is she?
Caitlin's grave, yes.
Thank you. She's done a lot to help me with the petition and emails and keeping me updated on everything, and I greatly appreciate the support on behalf of Reverend and Mother White's family. Kathleen, I don't know if she's here, but she was the first person I contacted that pointed me in the right direction for this. And again, on behalf of the entire White family, I'd like to thank you all.
Yes, sir, thank you for coming in. I appreciate it. Moving to appointments of historic preservation, Mr. Calendar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The appointments for the Historic Preservation Commission, we had the application from Jane Camp, who was sitting unappointed, who was vacant spot. She has applied to be reappointed, and then we had a new application from Joy Pekanu, and those are your two recommended applicants for the Historic Preservation Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Calendar. Are there any questions for Brad? I'll entertain a motion, please. Move to approve. Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Sams. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. I think I saw Joy back there. Joy, you want to raise your hand?
Thank you for coming, and thank you for serving.
Moving to the appointment on the Planet Commission, Mr. Calendar?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a reappointment of one of our existing members. This is for Shawna Mathias. She is currently asking for a reappointment to the Planet Commission, and then there will be one remaining open seat that you will need to appoint next month. So we still have open applications for that position, but this is a reappointment of Shawna Mathias.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for Brad? I'll entertain a motion. Move to approve. Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Sams. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to district items, Ms. Malcolm.
We don't have anything at the moment.
Thank you. Ms. Crawford?
No, other than, we've got the update on Marable. This is all I need.
Thank you, Rodney. Stay on them. Mr. Boyce?
I don't have anything.
Ms. Sams? Ms. Brown? Tyler Gregory?
Thankful very much to the city for all the, keeping us above water, literally, and when we went underwater, getting everything sorted out so that we kept running. Appreciate all you guys do.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
David Dickinson?
Nothing further.
And I have three things. First, when we had the outage at City Hall that caused us to be without internet, I got to read a book that night, in between getting yelled at by my wife because the internet wasn't working. But I did want to thank you, Rodney and Mike, and Chris Bailey, and all the other guys that were over here, putting everything back together again, because I know that was a lot of work. I want everybody to know that the Freedom Bowl is Friday night, where Monroe is going to take on Loganville, and we will beat them again this year, and Skip Beliles will be wearing the stinkiest on-the-field shirt that I can find. And Jeremiah is one of the coaches for our Little League football team, the Purple Hurricanes. They lost their first regular season game last year, and I believe they're going to be playing that team again coming up this weekend. Is that correct? Will be, that'll be on Saturday, so good luck, go Canes. And now I need a motion to adjourn to executive session, please.
I move.
Thank you, Ms. Malcolm. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Crawford. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Meeting adjourned to executive session.